To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on to the next item, which is the adoption of the agenda. Mr. Raznick?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would move that we move the consent agenda to item, to the next available item, which would be 4.05.
Okay.
And ask that we adopt the agenda in that manner.
I believe item eight.
Sorry. Yes, and item 8.02, add that as well.
Second, thank you, and all in favor of adopting the agenda?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, we will then move through the agenda. Thank you to our community members for understanding our need to make this switch. We'll try to not keep you too terribly late this evening nonetheless. All right, Mr. Kimball, the consent agenda.
Yes, staff appointments, that the board approve the following staff appointments for the 2012-13 school year. Marlee Liebner, sixth grade language arts teacher, Mary Ellen Henderson. Celeste Carson, sixth grade math teacher, Mary Ellen Henderson. Dr. Vonda Willis, special education teacher, Mary Ellen Henderson. Amanda Heffrich, social studies teacher, George Mason. Micah Thomason, student services counselor, George Mason. Diana Harrington, general education paraprofessional, George Mason. Brian Ritchie, special education paraprofessional, system-wide. Resignation, that the board accept the resignation of Brian Jackson, special education teacher, effective the end of the 2011-12 school year. Extra pay for extra duty assignments, that the board approve the following EPED assignments for the 2012-13 school year. Three instructional leadership CERT EPED assignments. Advisory committee appointments, that the board approve the following advisory committee appointments. Kimberly Shavitzky and Mary Wilcox, daycare advisory board for terms ending June 30th, Authorization for signatures for assistant, in the absence of the superintendent, that the board approve the authorization for signatures for the absence of the superintendent, assistant superintendent Lisa Hy and assistant superintendent Hunter Kimball, in the absence of the division superintendent through June 30th, 2014. Approval for gifted and talented plan, that the school board approve the 2012-2017 local plan for the gifted and talented as presented. VRS resolution, that the board approve the VRS resolution, member contribution by salary reduction for school divisions in accordance with chapter 822 of the 2012 Acts of Assembly, Senate Bill 497. Virginia School Boards Association Media Honor Roll Resolution, that the board approve the VSBA Media Honor Roll Resolutions as presented, recognizing Nicholas Benton of the Falls Church News Press and Andre Taylor of the Falls Church Patch for their ongoing and exemplary nature of reporting on the Falls Church City Public Schools to the community. VSBA legislation, school bus safety, that the school, that the Falls Church City Public School Board expressed its support for legislation under which penalties would apply to motorists established by video record of not stopping while the school bus is stopped. The record could come from a camera installed on the bus or at intersections or any other reasonably verifiable source, including handheld devices. The board asked that the VSBA include such legislation among its legislative positions for the 2013 session of the General Assembly. Minutes, that the board approve the minutes of May 22nd, 2012, as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball, for that lengthy recitation. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Some.
All right, and Mr. Sharp, you will second that. All in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed or abstentions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next matter is what was previously 8.02, 2012 summer school request. This will be the last thing we'll take action on this evening. I will ask the superintendent to please give us some background on this topic.
For summer school, in the way that our school board policy is written right now, if we have a student who is not one of our, for instance, at George Mason, they're not one of our high school students in the spring, and they do not intend to enroll in the fall, then they are not eligible to attend our summer school, even if they are residents of the city and they're taxpaying citizens, bona fide residents. So what we're asking for this summer, we have had more than one request, as people have, now that we are extending, I guess, our learning at George Mason also, we're not just remediating anymore. And so this is our first summer where we're allowing different types of enrollment. So we're having a request. What I've asked for is for the school board to give me the discretion this summer, to be able to, proof of residency on students who may want to access summer school, and allow them to do that, but for this summer only, so that I can have time to review policy. And also, if you remember at our last board meeting, Ms. Wadiska brought up the BHSL issue, which also dovetails with this one as well, on what we're going to do with policy going forward. So I'm asking for your permission for me to be the decision-maker this summer to override that policy as it's written right now.
And I'll move that we grant the superintendent discretion as requested.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion, any questions about that? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and any opposed? All right, Dr. Jones, help those kids this summer, and we'll work on the policy during the course of the school year.
All right, now we're going to go back to the way we usually start our meeting, and that is with public comments and requests. I do have one slip for public comment this evening, and that is from Joyce Farr, which is kind of a backward order now, but still, we would love to hear you speak. If you would just go to the podium right here, and if you would give your name and your address, and then you'll have three minutes to talk to us.
My name is Joyce Farr, my address is 1301 Gibson Place, and I was one of the ones that was just referenced as asking for an exception for the summer school policy. So I thank you for addressing that issue very quickly. My daughter did attend the City of Falls Church schools from K through fifth grade, and we did take her over to the Catholic schools for a variety of different reasons. So we appreciate the opportunity for her to be able to go back and reinforce her math skills, which will be very important for SATs. So thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you for coming, I appreciate your speaking to us tonight. Mr. Kimball, we have a letter from the Mount Daniels staff?
We do. Mount Daniels did send a communication letter to the school board dated May the 11th concerning their concerns about changes to the kindergarten program, specifically the kindergarten schedule for the first two weeks of the new school year. I will note that since this communication came, Dr. Guba, Kathy Halaico, and myself sat down and worked through the school calendar and a number of options, and we now have a plan that is agreeable to all to, for the opening of school and kindergarten, and meets the multiple needs of the school division and the school, as well as the children and the families.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kimball. For the public's notice, I would also say that at our last school board work session, we took this topic up and discussed it in great length among the members of the school board, along with our superintendent, and so this isn't something that has been laying fallow. All right, thanks very much. Moving along, we next have recognition and reports. We have some annual reports to the board. If I look in the audience, I believe we must have the special advisory committee annual reports to the board. Welcome, ladies, would you like to come up and tell us your story?
To the large audience.
It feels kind of sparse in here tonight, doesn't it?
Yeah, it feels strange tonight. Good evening, my name is Shannon Royce, I'm the chairman of the Special Education Advisory Committee, and I come tonight to make the report of the committee. You have the written report in your grouping, there were just two or three things that we wanted to point out to you and draw to your attention. I know you have many things on your plate, and so wanted to make sure to bring these things to your attention. We first wanted to acknowledge our appreciation. Dr. Jones has been terrific this year, has jumped in with both feet, making her presence widely known in the special ed community particularly. She's made herself quite accessible to us, and there are many of us who have expressed sincere gratitude for that, and we appreciate her participation with us in addressing concerns that we've brought to her attention. She's invited an unprecedented level of communication from the community, even providing her personal phone number, and that really has engendered a lot of trust, so thank you very much for that. Ms. Germer is not here tonight, but we did want to acknowledge how much we appreciate her work. Her vision, professionalism, responsiveness are real assets to us as the committee, and also her leadership has set a real positive tone in the community as we work with staff and parents. She's improved communication information exchange between staff and parents, she's enhanced system-wide training to equip our teachers, one of the things that we saw come out of the study last year, and she's identified and procured research-based programs and technologies that will help our children with special needs. We did a new thing this year, it's something we've talked about for several years, but we actually went out on a limb and tried it this year, and that is, and you know this, Susan, as our liaison, we did partnerships twice this year for meetings with the PTA and the PTSA, and had very successful meetings, a meeting in December with the high school PTSA for college information nights specifically for parents with children with special needs. Sometimes the regular information nights leave you with your eyes glazing over a bit, because our kids are not going to go to Ivy League schools, and they're, they don't have IB diplomas, and so we're looking for different kinds of college opportunities at times for them, and this night was really, really well received, to the point that it's going to be an annual event for our committee to do, hopefully earlier in the year, maybe a November meeting each year, that draws parents in and talks with them about the college issues they're dealing with. In February, we did a meeting with the elementary PTA, which also was very well received on autism. And as you know, the members of the community, I don't think realize this, but our autism prevalence is not just increasing nationally, it is increasing locally. And as a result, we've hired our autism specialist, Carrie Lutonwa, and she came and met with the committee and the elementary PTA, and really helped us to have a better understanding of what it is we're dealing with, with the educational and social needs of children on the autism spectrum. So these two events this year, in cooperation with the PTA, PTSA, we hope to continue in the future, because we think that this kind of engagement enhances understanding across the community of children with special needs, and allows us to have greater communication and greater understanding for our community. There are a number of other meetings we address in here, I'm not going to touch on all of those. The last thing I did want to bring to your attention was a meeting that our vice chairman, Barbara Mack, attended on Project Search. And Project Search is a program that we see in several other places in the nation. It is a program specifically for children with significant intellectual and developmental disabilities. Many of these children will never get a standard diploma, and yet, we want to enhance their ability to live as independently as they're able to. So Project Search is a program that focuses on training these students with internships in three different kinds of job opportunities and atmospheres, helping them with their communication skills, teamwork, and problem-solving. All skills that we all know in our work are very important, and so they are important for these children, these students as well. Alexandria Hospital, as you may know, has agreed to become a Project Search sponsor, and Arlington and Falls Church City are going to be working in cooperation in the event that at some point in the future, we have a student who would fit this profile and be a beneficiary of the program. So our goals for the future, our recommendations really for the future, are to focus on continuing to enhance communication with our parent community through our website and our listserv, which continues to grow, to continue this partnership we've really enhanced this year with the PTA, and finally, to improve teacher accountability for IEP implementation and student growth. And I'm sad that Dr. Guba's not here tonight, because we had in our report just how much we love her, and great, how grateful we are for her, and I'm sorry she's not here to hear that, I will tell her that personally, she knows that. The final thing I wanted to mention is that this is my last night as chairman.
Yes, I heard that.
I stepped down as chairman and need a bit of a respite from this role, and our very able vice chairman is going to be serving as the chairman for the new year. I do have another year on the committee, and I will serve that out, but needed a bit of a respite from this responsibility. So we, the two of us, can answer any questions you might have, otherwise, thank you for your time.
Mr. Raznick?
I know you have many things on your plate.
Any comments or questions? Mr. Sharp, I know you have something, because you always do.
Madam Chair, no.
He does, he's just curious, he always has a question.
Yes, sir.
I want to thank the committee, certainly your report tonight, and our liaison this year, which had to change during the year, as I recall.
No, I had this one from last year, it was another thing I changed, yeah.
That was different, different change. But anyway, this is a very, very thorough and really very positive report, and I'm really, really terrifically pleased that we've made progress in this area. I do want to ask about the internship program, the search. You indicated that Alexandria Hospital is one of the sites that might be, as I understand, a site where these internships might take place.
Yes.
Are there some other sites that, Inova Fairfax, or?
They haven't branched out into those areas, so currently, there are several sites in DC, Department of Education has a site, I believe National Institute of Health has a site, and that kind, so they tend to do a lot of hospital sites, because there are jobs that are repetitive in nature, but take a fairly complex set of skills to master. So they tend to be churn roles for a normal employee or a typical employee, and they tend to be very successful placements for children with intellectual disabilities. So one of the issues in our local community was being able to find a site that would support a project search, and Alexandria has been interested in launching, but they didn't have the appropriate population size to do it on their own. So they reached out to Falls Church City and to Arlington County to see if they would work together to persuade Fairfax, not Fairfax and Inova, but Alexandria and Inova to choose to be a site. So the training that I attended talked a lot about how you launch a project search, what those kinds of value-added are for both the employer and the students that get the opportunity, and then in general, there tend to be a high number of placements within those settings for the students that go through the internships. So another alternative for our community, since we are a little bit smaller, we have less options in terms of our transitions for children with intellectual disabilities.
Thanks, thanks very much for creating this additional option for us. I would like to ask if we might talk offline a bit more, I'm interested in perhaps some further exploration with our BI coordinator, and maybe there are some additional business sites that could be appropriate for this kind of thing, and still be ones that would not, you know, would not upset the apple cart on what you've put together so far.
That would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, wait a minute, wait, 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 I didn't get a chance to recognize and thank you guys. So I'd like to recognize and thank you guys. It was a pleasure working with you again this year, although I apologize and say that life and other issues seem to collide, and I did not get there as frequently as I liked, and I apologize for that to the group. I think it was a great year. As you know, I was just wowed completely by the December meeting over at George Mason. I just think that is one of the best things that has been done by you guys in a long time, so that was great. Shannon, thank you for your leadership. You have been with this group for a long time, through good and bad, and up and down and sideways, and you know, everything else, and I know it's not been easy, and I just truly appreciate your persistence and your leadership, so thanks very much, and I'm sorry that you'll just be sitting on the side like everybody else next year. But that doesn't mean you can't be prepared and you can't go to sleep.
Oh, I'll be engaged.
I know you will, I know you will. And Barbara, thank you for stepping up to vice chair this year, and for stepping up to chair next year. I think that, under your leadership, that the committee will take just the next step. So thanks, I really appreciate it, you guys, and thanks for the report. Good night.
Can I just add one thing to that?
Please.
I just want to make sure that you, that the school board realizes that we did do our annual reports a little bit different this year, and that's why they're all, if you actually print them, it does print off as one bound where they're all formatted. And we did invite all 14 groups, if we needed to be on a tighter schedule, to make sure they knew they had the opportunity to speak, but we only had one group that really, you know, felt it was important to be here tonight. So I just want to thank all of the other 13 groups that are on here, because they did great work this entire year, and really spent a lot of hours to put these together.
That's great. Well, I would prefer they'd spend their hours doing their work rather than reporting it to us, so long as we got this, so that's great, and I'm sure the community likes to hear that they had the opportunity to come tonight, so thank you very much. Enrollment projections, Dr. Jones?
What I have for you tonight on Board Docs is, just so that you have an idea, when you look at Weld and Cooper numbers, as we went through the budget cycle, you know, this year, one thing that we are always asked is, are our numbers, the Kimball model, is it correct, you know, how accurate are we? So thank you to our chair, she connected me with Weld and Cooper. Before I contracted them to go out farther, I wanted to look at their '09 projections to see how close was, how close were they in comparison to where Mr. Kimball had us for this year, and they actually are just neck and neck, which made me feel great that our Kimball model is really working. And if you look at the top, the '09 projections from Weld and Cooper, which I think most people would agree would be one of the best organizations in the country to run numbers, they had our kindergarten at 132. So their number was just as challenging, as a matter of fact, we were a little bit closer than Weld and Cooper, so Hunter can pat himself on the back, and they would have had us this school year at 2,102. So, you know, it was within about 50, which is actually very close, which is right where Hunter's, Kimball's numbers were as well. And going out the next five years, I went ahead, it's actually relatively inexpensive to look, so we went through 2016, and we may very well take it out another five or 10 years. I wanted to see what they were going to bring us, and I'm going to look and see how we come in in September, and see if this first '12 number is looking like it's pretty accurate, and then we'll have them go ahead and go back out another five years, so that we have two models running consecutively to help us be more on target.
So for those who are not here, what's the bottom line? What are we looking at in terms of percentage increases over the next several years?
For, we have one year that's at 3.5%, but over the next five years, we will grow by more than 500 children. It'll be between 4 and 4.5% every year, with the exception of one year. So Weld and Cooper, as well as Mr. Kimball, neither have us slowing down right now.
Okay, and one thing from our Gang of Eight meeting last week was, we were going to take those numbers and check with Mr. Kimball to see if the new apartments that will be coming online in the next few years have been incorporated or not, and then if they haven't, incorporate them and bring them back.
They have not.
They have not, so we have a little bit of work to do there. Okay, so the bottom line for the community is, this year was not an aberration, we're going to continue on that path. Any questions about that for Dr. Jones?
I do have a comment.
Yes, sir.
Wow. Nice job, by the way, Hunter, but yeah, that growth is going to be challenging.
Right, it is for us. Mr. Sharp, did you have a comment or a question?
Yeah, I think this is great that we're taking advantage of their expertise in this area, so thanks, thanks very much for following through. Now, we have on our site, we have, I see two blocks, the one, can you explain a little bit what the one block is versus the other block, the top?
The one on the top is the 2009 projection, so if we go back to, what did Weld and Cooper say in 2009, where did they say we would be 1112? Because I wanted to see how close their previous projection was to where we actually came in this year. And then the one on the bottom is the one that I asked them to do just, you know, probably a month or so ago for me, was to give us the projection, this 2012 is next school year, they have us at 2,260 students, and that takes us through 2016, based on all of the information they have as of today.
Okay, all right.
So as of, if this is how we go, I think that would give us the highest number that Falls Church has had in its history?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
And that, this would be the first year in which we reach that milestone, is that right?
I think back to 1964, 60, probably, they actually have 18.
I just can't.
And that was with a lot fewer housing units in Falls Church at that time.
Yeah, we're here a minute.
Yeah, I guess so, or, you know, a very different age distribution in the population. And that's sort of one of the additional factors that I wonder if, I know we've wanted to, for a long time, look more carefully at housing units, and I think that's great. I encourage us to continue to do that. But I also think age distribution is something that we should ask them, are they looking at that factor, and how it's changing over time? I think, I know there are some, you know, variations depending on, well, just the, you know, the way that different generations are at different points in their life cycle having children than the previous generation. And there are some differences like that, that probably, you know, you can't just go by what the age distribution pattern was yielding in 1990, and what it might yield in 2015. But at the same time, I think it's something they probably have been following, and I think it would be a potentially strong indicator for us of where we go in the future, because we have this issue of turnover in our existing units, and even though we've grown in the number of units, we still have, I think, a manageable, statistically speaking, a manageable universe of units that if we look at age distribution, and follow patterns over time, it's not so complex within our, within just our jurisdiction, as it would be like in a Fairfax County, or some really much larger area. So that's all I wanted to ask.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. I think the city has just done some work in that regard as well, to look at age distribution in the city and where it's headed. I don't know who they did it with or how they did it, but White Shield mentioned that to me after the Gang of Eight meeting. So what I'm going to ask, Dr. Jones, if you would get with your peer on the city side, I'd like to give visibility into these numbers to our colleagues on city council pretty quickly, so they know what we expect to be coming, and also, if you would work with him on any new development coming online, and how that might affect these numbers, and kind of check in with him on these age demographics to see, you know, if we can work together to pull something that will be meaningful for both parties, that would be great. All right, the superintendent's report, Dr. Jones?
Okay. In academics, first of all, we've just finished all of our AP, IB, SOL, testing, 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 testing. And, you know, our students have worked incredibly hard, but I also, I'm going to say this before our test results come out, because it's, you always look negative when you say it after. We did have a new math assessment this year, set by the state, using 2009 standards, but we are going to have an active voice, you know, with the Virginia Department of Education to make sure that they know that we were very disappointed with the assessment. And I say that upfront, because we had children at TJ, at Thomas Jefferson, for instance, that were in tears, because this assessment took many, many of our students three hours. Our Algebra II assessment in the high school, right now, the state is saying, we're seeing the lowest results in Algebra II across the state of Virginia, which to me is ironic when you think that our high schools are all on the US News, and reports for being the best in the country, and the assessments were lasting between three and four hours at high school. So I share that upfront before we get our results, in the sense that we were just disappointed, and we want to make sure we have an active voice this year, because three hours of assessment for our children was just too incredibly long, and we're all for rigor and standards. On a happy note, graduation is tomorrow, and we can't wait for that, it's going to be a great day. Report cards go out next week, and then, I know Mr. Kimball mentioned earlier, we're excited about our new start to kindergarten, we feel like we're going to really accomplish a great transition for our families during the first week, have time for conferencing, but then also that second week, get our kids in school full day, which is going to be a big help. I've had some positive comments from our families that are excited about that. We've had amazing concerts and shows, if you haven't been to any of those, you've missed it, they've just been amazing. I was down in Radford on Saturday, that was the longest drive ever. Now I know why everybody at George Mason goes down and stays the night, instead of leaving at 5:00 in the morning. But we did have the Triple Crown and tennis, won it all, soccer as well, and then of course. course, our kids were very successful at State Track this year as well. So that's all for me. We're wrapping up a wonderful, awesome year. Thank you.
Very good. Another awesome year in Falls Church. That's great. Board comments. Mr. Aznik, have you any board comments this evening?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Sharp, have you any board comments this evening?
Well, just to, well, I'll say, I attended the Chamber of Commerce meeting this morning. Their board has been very active and, I think, very, very helpful to us throughout the year. Seeing the BI E report this evening, you can see the really great variety of things that our BI E coordinator has encouraged the business community to do, and how really very responsive they have been. We've been a member of the chamber for several years. The chamber is, you know, despite recession and all that sort of stuff, it's holding its own and even increasing its membership, now up to over 260 members in the chamber. And I think we have good prospects of having a very fruitful relationship with them, and I hope we can continue to have that regardless of who the liaison might be in the future. David Tarter was there this morning from, of course, he was recently elected to the city council and was chair of the EDA, and so I anticipate a very strong connection by the council with that group going forward. Lastly, I'll just remark on the reports that we received this evening. I had kind of a common question about, I saw that we had added some language interpretation services when we did, for example, the ESOL committee was indicating that when they had Parents Night, that they had language services, and I wondered, you know, are we sort of planning for that on a regular basis, that that's not just happening with ESOL, but also with special ed? And even when you have the special ed group meeting to figure out, okay, how do we approach college? Is there, you know, is there also translation services that go along, that could go along with daycare? Are there parents that would be better accessing daycare if we had a way of getting translation services more systematically available? So that's just something I hope we'll look into in the future. I think we've begun, we've made a very good start with the ESOL area, but it's one of those things that, as we try to engage all parts of our community, that we should look at whether our services are able to reach those language minorities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. I have no board comments this evening, except to say that for the community's information, the school board is seeking membership on certain advisory boards and committees, and we would love it if you would go to our website and look under School Board, Committees, and Advisory Boards, specifically with the Health Advisory Board, Family Life Education, Gifted and Talented Advisory Committee, and ESOL. Those four in particular, we need citizens from the community to please come and volunteer. And with that, if there's nothing else, we stand adjourned for the evening. Thank you, everyone.